I would like to call the Village of Westmont Org Budget Workshop for fiscal year 2011, 2012 to order, for June 13, 2011, and begin by having the clerk take the roll call.
Mayor Ron?
Here.
The clerk's here. Trustee Emery is absent tonight. Trustee Fleming?
Here.
Trustee Klebanow is absent. Trustee Nero?
Here.
Trustee Scott?
Here.
Trustee Seneca?
Here.
Manager Searle?
Here.
Police Chief Mulhern.
Here.
Economic Development Director and Assistant Manager Kimball.
Here.
Acting Finance Director Parker.
Here.
Public Works Director May.
Here.
Deputy Police Chief Brenza.
Here.
Deputy Fire Chief Weiss.
Here.
Human Resource Administrator Casey.
Yeah.
Village Planner and Assistant Economic Development Director Malik.
Here.
Deputy Clerk and Finance Collector Kamak.
Here.
Deputy Fire Chief Connolly.
Here.
And the Library Director Kuhn.
Okay. With the cast of thousands, please rise and join us in the...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
We just don't do as well without Mark.
The last meeting when we left off was on our budget review was still looking at the budget for the fire department budget. So with that being said, unless Ron, you want to get, add something first? We'll go back to...
Well, just that, yeah, just that on the agenda for this evening, we tried to outline in terms of the items that we thought were kind of outstanding from the last discussion. To bring us back to that discussion, I know our finance director's passed out a number of different documents tonight, which he's prepared to go through and explain. Kind of following, I assume we kind of follow this outline, but I guess at this point, we would suggest to the board to open it up for questions that you might have about the fire department's budget. And the next item for discussion is the training budget, and there's a pretty lengthy document that's been passed out, which our acting finance director will describe in a couple of minutes. So I guess at this point, we would entertain questions from the board about the fire department budget. And we have a number of fire department personnel here this evening that I'm sure can answer any questions that the board may have.
Including Scallum. I'm sorry, I didn't see you come in, Craig.
And just so that the board is aware, we have the, we've printed out the fire reconciliation again. It's the back of the pile of green sheets. So the green sheets are the updated ones, updated from the previous time. We've also got fire at the very back. Information. I know at the last meeting, it was briefly discussed about how the online version had some additional footnotes and answered some of the questions. So it's, I mean, it's very possible that you guys have looked online and already gotten the answers to any questions you may have. If there's any additional questions, we're happy to help.
Spencer, under capital outlay?
Yeah.
Building purchase improvement?
Yes.
Miscellaneous for a thousand?
Yeah.
Craig, too.
Wondering about the footnote there? That might have the detail. Footnote number 12.
Where we have a thousand dollars?
Yeah.
From miscellaneous in there. That'll cover various things. I believe in there what we have is painting right now and a thousand dollars for miscellaneous. That's just to cover items that we don't know, may come up. We have nothing in mind at this point in time. But if anything breaks or we need to update anything, that's what the thousand dollars is in there for.
Thank you. Under professional services from the fire department, being negotiated with Kurtz Ammunition, do we have an update on what is being done with that currently?
Yeah, we were able to go back to Kurtz again this year and sit down with them and review their contract for this next year. It was supposed to be, I believe, like $987,000. And we were able to negotiate their contract down by $75,000, where it's going to be $912 this next year. This is the second year in a row that Kurtz has, I think the third year in a row, that Kurtz has renegotiated their contract and have lowered their cost down to the village and to the fire department, which has been a great relationship with Tom Vanna and the Kurtz Departmentic Services.
And we talked about, when it came before the board, that the escalator that's in there actually tracks from the original dollar amount. Just wanted to clarify that to the board. So it wouldn't be from the new rate. It would have been what the rate would have been if they hadn't have renegotiated.
Correct.
That. And that's the way it's structured in the contract agreement.
And you're estimating that the total cost will be, wouldn't you say, $900?
$912,000.
Thousand dollars.
Right. Set up $987.
Yeah, that's wonderful. It's amazing that they can, that they're willing to do that. How do you account for that?
Basically, what Tom Vanna said is that the turnover employees were down. So hiring physicals and purchasing fire gear and purchasing uniforms, those were down. His insurance in certain areas were down. He had very few workman's comp claims, so that was down. So there is some savings there, which he always has opened his books to us and returned, you know, that money to us. So that's why he was able to do what he was able to do.
Okay. That's excellent.
And included in the $912, even lowering it down by $75,000, is a 2% pay increase for his contract medics, because he said he couldn't go three years in a row without giving his employees some type of increase. So there's a 2% pay increase in there for all 12 contract medics. And then they had, we had taken away all their, all their personal days that we paid for, and that included giving them back three more personal days. And their days are used for sick time, personal days or vacations. So they only get 324s just a year.
Okay, okay. Very, very frugal.
Yeah. Yeah, we brought them to the table and they're able, we looked, we looked over every item that they charge us for and, you know, said, what's, what's the bottom line? And when we got done, you know, we're $75,000 less.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
Just out of curiosity, just because I want to ask, what does something like the kids' camp cost, the fire department, and say Citizens Fire Academy? What does some of those items, what is the cost?
Cost for the Citizens Fire Academy?
Yeah.
Cost for the Citizens Fire Academy runs anywhere from $2,000 to $2,500 in the cost. Most of the cost is for the wages, to bring back the personnel that we need to have a ratio. If we have 25 people in the class, we usually have an instructor for every five people. It's a safety reason. There's T-shirts in there that we get them for, they're graduating. And there's some office supply cost in there for putting together the materials that we need. For most part, our fire inspectors and our officers are the ones that put the program on, and it's pretty set. The kids', the kids' camp, again, is about $1,800. And that's, that's all cost for wages. We get the shirts that are usually covered by the police alumni or the fire alumni. The water bottles are covered by them. And then all the other materials, all their meals and snacks are all donated.
Is that, is that the fire camp, or is that just the...
That's the fire camp.
That's the fire camp for the, for the young kids?
Yeah, the eight, nine, 10-year-olds, for the two-day camps that we used to have in June, July, and August.
Yep, okay.
And this year, we're going to have one in, in August, a one-two-day camp. We're calling it Back to School Safety Camp. And it's on behalf of the Westmont Special Events. They donated money to us to kick the camp off again. And then the police alumni and the fire alumni also came on board. And the police department has some grant money that are left that they're helping buy water bottles or some of the supplies, too. So it's coming together. We just need to get the, the kids now registered and fill the class.
How do you determine, is it, it's open to people that are not residents of the Village of Westmont?
It's open to all children ages eight, nine, and 10 that attend Westmont schools.
That attend Westmont schools.
Or any Boy Scout or Girl Scout troops.
Okay.
That are in Westmont. You know, and we always try to take first timers first. If they've never been to the camp, we always try to get them in the camp first.
Okay.
Before we take returning kids.
Great. Do you always usually have a full?
Yeah, you know, we used to fill all, we used to fill all three of them.
Yeah.
All three camps, June, July, and August.
There may be some cost involved in it. The education for those young children is really invaluable, in what they can learn and have for the rest of their lives, in my opinion.
It is. The information that the police and fire both deliver to them is very valuable, and they take that even back to the school and even take it back to the other kids in the neighborhood and share it with their family members. They have homework assignments on the first night that they had to do with their families. And they had to bring it back the next day. And then when mom and dad come to graduation, we also quiz them, too.
And the adult academies also are those figures, those figures are also in here. That also is a good program. Now, how do you determine, because I know there are people from other villages that have come up to me that have been involved, how do you make the decision who's in and who's out in terms of the adults? Or is it open until, for everyone until it fills up?
We use at least a minimum of 12 people for the fire academy class. And we can't do really more than 20 because of the equipment that we have.
Okay.
Only have spare enough equipment for 20 people to be able to use. So we usually fill, you know, all the classes. And if we do have extra people, then we either try to squeeze them after one or two, or we start building another class.
Do the people, the residents of Westmont, have priority?
Yes.
Or other villages?
Yes.
Just heard some very, very positive comments from adults that have gone to those classes, and they just think it's wonderful. And the last person I talked to was from Darien, and said they wish that Darien would do something like that.
Well, you know, they're all great programs. The fire academy, the police academy, because what happens is, once they're done with them, they're like the ambassador of our police and fire departments, where they go out to their neighbors, their relatives, just not in Westmont, but wherever they live, and they pass on what they learned. And that's what we're here for.
Public, public relations are invaluable. Thank you. Questions from other?
I mean, I'm just, I'm just, I threw that out there, just wondering if maybe there might be a couple of those things we might be able to throw back in here somehow. I mean, I don't know what everybody else thinks, but, I mean...
I like the idea.
I mean, there are two public relations type-driven items that are, that are there that deal with the public and...
For a minimal amount of money.
I mean, you're talking, let's say, what, maybe $4,500 between the two of them? Maybe five, give or take?
Forty-three hundred.
Okay.
Twenty-five for one, eighteen for the other. And just to clarify, Mayor, the Citizens Fire Academy is not in our current budget.
No.
Is what?
Is not in our current budget.
It's not in the budget.
Okay.
Neither is the kids' camp.
Okay. Wow. I definitely agree. I'd like to see that back in. I would like to see those back if, if at all possible.
I agree. We would love to have them back.
So the kids' camp and the Citizens Fire Academy?
Are they?
The kids' camp and the Citizens Fire Academy are the two we're talking about.
Right.
You know, I know that we took out fire personnel at the Fourth of July, didn't we?
Mm-hmm.
Did we have any incidents last year? Does anyone know where it would have been helpful to have someone from the fire department there, a medic, or?
Fourth of July?
Yeah, I thought we...
What we, what we do is, we have on-duty crews.
So you just have them there?
Available at the Fourth of July. So we, we've always had personnel there. A few years ago, we were able to have an extra engine company.
Mm-hmm.
That was just standby for the fireworks, in case there was an ambulance call or fire call. Because all that equipment, if we did a fire alarm or a stretcher fire, all the equipment leaves, the fireworks still proceed, but without any fire protection or without any EMS personnel there. So we always had an engine company of off-duty personnel come in for the fireworks only.
Could cover it.
And we no longer do that.
But we don't use the cart anymore, right?
No, we don't.
At the taste, or at any event?
No, that, all that was cut.
Okay. That's something I wish we could somehow work back in for the taste.
You know, and as we talk about the budget, and I'm sorry, I was late. I was at a North Fire District meeting, and that went a little bit, little bit long. When we're talking about the fire department, we're talking about the manning and the personnel and, and what makes it all work together. It's not just one thing. It's, it takes a lot of things to pull it together. Recruitment and retention of personnel, I believe I was, got some information back from the village that, after we started talking about it and it became, you became aware that as far as keeping who we have, keeping quality people here, everything is, everything comes together. A big part of that was training, bringing people in so that we can train them up. I have a lot of outside, well, all of our, our part-time people, a good majority of them come from other departments. They're here for a certain reason, to get trained. It benefits them, benefits the Village of Westmont. Through that, through their training, or a vehicle which they use is the different specialty teams. We have dive team, hazmat, quasi-origin, technical rescue. Those, in order to be on those teams, that's part of the training process and the hands-on process. We've had individuals that joined the fire department and have come up through the ranks, and actually then have been, they've gotten jobs as chief officers and as fire chiefs through all the training that they've received through Westmont. So Westmont benefits, and so do they. Part of where we're going with this is that, in order to keep the system going, that, as you know, saves millions of dollars, we have to keep those things functioning to still keep quality people here. And our, our programs, it involves training, involves specialty teams. It involves the personnel that, that we have coming into Westmont. And so it's, it's not just one or two things. It's, it's the whole, it's a whole program that we have at Westmont. So...
Chief, in your list, you've got remove specialty team incentive, was removed from the proposed budget. Can you give the board some kind of quantifiable idea of what that would be?
What we're talking...
In the budget, you've got remove specialty team incentive.
Right.
How much, are we talking about dollar-wise?
It's approximately .37 cents per person.
Total for the budget.
And we're talking about specialty teams, 22,000 total.
Okay. And that's what you're talking about now, right?
That's what we're talking about now, is a, it's a, it's specialty team incentive. It's also hazardous duty pay, if they're expected to train and then also to go in those environments. If you're doing dive rescue and going under ice at night, and it's a very hazardous situation. If you're training with technical rescue and you're going off the sides of buildings or down into entrenched areas below grade, you're talking about hazardous training, which we do, for when the serious incident does come along, we can operate in those environments. Same thing with firefighting and other things. And so they were given .37 cents an hour additional hazardous duty incentive pay. And that was all cut. What, as I said before, is that we were given a goal. This is what we needed to cut. And so we cut.
What you had to cut.
We didn't leave anything in there. We operate on its skin and bone. Okay, so if you had your druthers right now, what you would like to see, which is most important, that you feel from the fire department's standpoint, put back in this budget, what would it be?
It would be the...
Your priorities? The priorities? It would be the incentive for, specialty team incentive. Okay. The thirty, which is the 37, 38 cents. Okay. Per individual. The, the, some of the programs in which we would like to still maintain for the, for the firefighters and also for our residents, our children, our safety programs. Another thing, too, is the, the day shift incentive, which we have, which our firefighters initiated, when we first started talking about this a couple of years ago, about cutbacks. They did not want to cut bad personnel that could put the residents and put themselves in a hazard. They would rather take a pay cut, and they did this without, we came down, we talked to them about it, that we might have to cut staff. They said, we would cut our pay rather than cut staff. And part of that was the incentive pay, and so on.
So is that the, the item that you've listed as reduced shift incentive? Is that the day shift incentive, or is that something broader?
It would be the, under the shift incentive, it's a dollar and a half.
But that includes other shift incentives besides the day?
It would be the day shift incentive of 68, eight, or 69, eight. I will overcome vanity, and put my, my glasses on, where it says shift incentives, and that's something the village has, has given our, our firefighters to overcome the, the cost of, there's a cost to come back and work for Westmont.
Right.
If they're, if they're at home and they have to be a babysitter, their wife is working, they need it's an incentive to come back and work in Westmont. Otherwise, what they'd be paying out for babysitters and other things, it didn't make sense for them to do this. So that's why that incentive to work during the daytime was installed.
And then in the budget, it got reduced a couple of years ago. Is that right?
Yes. You know, we tried to cut, and we tried to be as frugal as we possibly can. And, you know, and our membership sees it, and they, they, they understand where we're coming from as a village and as a nation, too. And so we're trying to be good team players. At the same time, we're trying to keep that standard up and do what we need to do to protect our citizens. And to keep the good program that we have worked very hard to develop over the last 20 years.
Probably, probably not the right forum to ask this question, but I know we applied for a grant that had to do with number of personnel on a piece of equipment. Do we have any updates or anything on that?
They will give the latest.
We, we heard back from our fire act grant that we put in for the two replacement air compressors, and we did not get that grant this year. They ran out of money. The SAFER grant is for, that we applied for, is to retain the third positions on both the fire engines and the ladder truck. And we wrote it that way because we're at a point in our budget that if you come back and ask for us to cut more, it's going to be positions. And so we wrote the grant to try and keep those positions. And they, they give high scores to applications for the SAFER grant if you're going to retain three people on an apparatus. So I wrote the grant that way. The grant is broke down in three categories. It's hire-backs, so if a fire department laid off 12 firefighters, they award the grant to them first. And then those that are doing recruitment programs, they reward money to them.
Okay.
And then those that are wanting to retain positions is the last ones that they do.
So it's sort of as they see the greatest need?
Right. So we're at a point where they're in about the 20th round of about 45 rounds.
Wow.
We're getting to the point where they're going to start awarding for retention. We still have not been notified that we have not received a grant.
Okay, so it's still out there?
Right. So we wrote the grant. It's a four-year grant, no matching money, for $540,000 a year for those three positions.
Wow.
And so if we awarded it, it would be like a $2.2 million grant. You know, we'll see what happens. We score, we scored high on it, but it all depends on how many more scored higher than us and how much money's left.
Mm-hmm.
They did talk about President Obama recommended cutting the fire act grant, the SAFER grant, and the fire wrenching grants in half, from 400 million down to 200 million. The House and the Senate came back and said, no way. They reinstituted them back at 400. So so far, they're still at 400 for this next year.
Great.
But they are looking also to make their cuts, too. So we're hanging in there. We're waiting to hear you.
Great, thank you.
I guess the question, I guess the question that I'm asking is, those two items, aside of the other stuff we were talking about before, what would the increase be in the fire budget?
Specialty team incentive and the reduced, the shift incentive is what we're talking about?
Right.
I didn't hear the number you identified for the shift incentive. You said the specialty team is about 22,000.
Yeah, the, the crowd, was 69, eight for the...
69,000, 800?
69,800.
Okay.
We're talking approximately $100,000, $90,000. You know, when we look at the, the increase in the expenses of the, of the department over this last year, 336,000 increased, is what we're talking about this, this coming budget year. 175,000 of that is anticipated grants. So that's not really what the department... So, that's not really what the department is getting, it's what we're getting through grants. Another 106 in dispatch costs because we wanted to share the expense with the police department of the cost for Downers Grove Dispatch. So, they added us. They took the money out of the general fund, out of the police, they divided it between police and fire like we requested. So, it's not that we're getting $106,000, but it was just part of the money to do that process. We wanted to be, we wanted to share the expense with the police department rather than having it come out of their full budget, having them take the full load of that. And so, you know, we're trying to be, we're trying to work with you. We're trying to do the right, the right thing and work with other departments also. But that's where we're at. Chief, just out of curiosity, you talk about the guys coming here and getting training and that, that, you know, helps and that. I guess my question is that what, what do we get from, say, where they're working? I mean, we're training, we're training them and I understand that. Mm-hmm. But isn't that helping them advance at their home station? Yes, yes it is. So, I guess my question is, what is the reciprocation on that? Okay? Well, the personnel coming into us, they're getting trained also at their career departments. So, whatever they're getting, it's kind of a, I don't, because I've had that question asked by other fire chiefs. Well, if I allow my men to come to work at Westmont, what am I getting out of it? Well, you're getting a better trained firefighter because these are the programs we give. And I get your man to come and work for Westmont and you are training them up in these other areas. So, it's a win for both sides.
The real winners are the residents. Those are the real winners.
The real winners, well, when we say Westmont, we want to train them up to be competent people when they get on the street and do the job.
Well, we couldn't put a department like this together if we tried unless we did it this way.
Right.
There's no other department probably in the state that's trained like this department is.
Right, well, matter of fact...
I mean, cross-trained.
Right. Matter of fact, we're just, we're talking with some of the chiefs from our accreditation. And I have a chief from outside of Cleveland, Ohio. And he's, he has a four-station department. His budget is $10 million a year. And he has approximately the same, almost as far as personnel that we do, but his budget is $10 million a year. And his are all career union firefighters. And he, Kathy, yeah, Kathy, yeah. He was, that's what he was telling us today. And he was absolutely amazed at the Westmont program and he'd love to be able to do that back in Ohio, but who knows?
I think we've consistently heard that over the years that we've had accreditation teams here.
Yeah.
That this is a unique operation that we have and partially it's because of our location. We're very proximate to other career fire departments and are able to take advantage of that talent. And, you know, yeah, there are a lot of chiefs that are jealous, a lot of managers that are jealous of this type of department.
So, I guess the question comes down to, can we do one or the other? Do we do both? Do we do either?
If you're comfortable with it, I know Spencer's given you updated summary sheets. So, that is about 90, a little over $96,000. That would reduce our general fund balance that we have and that we have projected right now of 248,283. And that includes Spencer, the, we're still putting money into the emergency reserve.
Yes.
And the other portion of that is going to the water fund?
Yes, in the sheet right now, although I think we need to verify that. It's one of the items on the agenda we can verify for sure. But yes, that 100,000 is being sent out from the general fund right now. So, the net, projected net of 248,000 is accurate, the reorganization, the things that have been discussed to date.
So, they drop that 248,000 down to about 148,000.
Right, we did both of them.
What we have to remember though is that the, the ultimate fact is that we're still saving our community, the Village of Westmont, 2 to 3 million dollars. This is part of the incentive program that helps to maintain the system that we have. And in listening to your explanation, it sounds like that could have a somewhat serious effect on firefighters, paramedics, whatever, wanting to come here for training for themselves to better themselves, better their villages, but in the long run, better Westmont because it's saving us money plus it's achieving the objective of having trained personnel.
Right. Correct, Mayor. We built this system, this program, this department, anyone can have some part-time people come in, sit around the firehouse and wait for a call. But are the people trained up? Are they quality people? Are they doing all the right stuff? That's where our accreditation team, and it was so good to hear from, from outside chiefs, they shake their head and they, you know, like, wow, I'm just understanding it, but I still don't understand it. And we still don't understand how this happens. And I said, it was almost like the perfect storm, what had happened 20 years ago. And that, yeah, we had a part-time department. We had these little things, but we just didn't pull it together. And now we have this small cadre of our professional administrators and this is what we pulled together with the outside resources. We're located in this geographic area and we were not a union career department at the time. We were able to pull this together and this is where we're at today.
Well, and I think some of the, for lack of a better term, the job diversification by having these programs, the dive team, et cetera, you know, I think that helps draw people as well, but more importantly, to maintain them. Because, you know, as you say, they're not just, you know, sitting waiting for the call. They're, you know, they have other things that they're learning, doing, you know.
One of our quality captains, Rick Bowsick, came from Hinsdale. He said, and when he got on Westmont, he was a firefighter. And he said, "I just needed something. You have so many good opportunities here so I can grow and be part of this organization. I want to learn how to do training and so on." And then I, we hooked him up with Deputy Chief Weiss and allowed him to grow and he went from firefighter to lieutenant to captain and one of our quality people. And he takes the Westmont patch around the state of Illinois, training other people through the state, through the University of Illinois. But we have a lot of people doing that and bringing the Westmont patch, the Village of Westmont, into those areas and are going like, wow, that's a quality town, quality department. As I said earlier today while at our accreditation opening, we cannot do anything without the support of the village board and the manager's office. The fire department is a reflection of the administration. That's just how it is. We reflect the direction that the village administration wants us to go. And it's always been a very supportive endeavor, an ongoing endeavor.
I just want to add, I shared this with the chief the other, the other day. One of the fire departments that's, I know the chief very well, Manuka, I'm on the volunteer combination chiefs committee with him, sent us an email, asked him to know what our pay scale was for firefighters, fire paramedics, lieutenants, captains on both. He sent that out to about six combination departments and he sent those results back to me and I just gave them to the chief a couple of days ago. And what those results show is that Westmont is not the highest-paying combination department anymore. There are departments out there paying higher hourly wage for firefighters, EMTs and firefighter paramedics. Our officers are still up there pay-wise, but what that tells me and what I told the chief is, is our recruitment is starting to go down and our retention. And when that happens, that affects the system that we have in place.
Yeah, they're going to move.
And so, I think that's the message I want to, you all know, the only thing we can give our firefighters is pay and training and incentive. We hired, Tracy Fleming, they add to yours, we hired a group in, from Claritin Heights in 1991. There was like 10 or 11, Captain Bowsick was one of them. When all them came from Claritin Heights over to Westmont, they all had so many advanced certifications that it was unbelievable what added to our department then in '91. We did another group, I believe, in '96, '97. I was a training officer many years here at Westmont. I can tell you that the people that have come into the Westmont Fire Department has come in with more certifications than we probably have given them. And so, it is greatly, when we hire certified firefighters and EMTs and paramedics, it's a great advantage to us. And the only thing we can do is, like the chief said during the day, is give them an incentive so they can hire babysitters to be able to come and work for us during the day and pay our specialty team members. Right now, there is no motivation to be on the specialty teams because they're not getting any hazard pay anymore and they're not getting the extra pay. Some of them held on, some haven't, as you can see with the dive team. So, I think, you know, with the chief and the department, if you can do anything, those two things are probably the most important thing to us, to the department as a whole and to re-energize our system that we run there.
No way to take for us to be able to do that again?
Well, those two items along with the kids camp and the fire, Citizens' Fire Academy comes to $96,100.
We can't afford not to do it.
I agree.
That's the way it's...
The value is much more than, much more than that.
Let me just tell you, the kids camp, you probably won't need to add that this year because it's too late to do June and July. And if you prove in this year's budget, we won't need it until June, July, August of next year, which we're going to be into the next year's budget. So, if we can reserve that to come back next year when we submit our 12, 13 budget, so the 1800 you can take out.
Would you be able to pull together the adult academy for the fall? I don't know how much...
I think, yeah, we have plenty enough time to do that. Yep. If we do a good marketing and advertising, Chris does very good with that, but getting on the cable channel and getting it out to everybody.
That'd be great. That'd be great.
I'm for it. I'm for both of these things. We got to keep these guys happy.
I agree.
I mean, it's, we get more, a ton more out of it than what we put into it. I think it's a great idea.
Yep.
Well, those of us that are here this evening are pretty much in agreement with both of these items.
Yes.
Okay.
I wouldn't have asked the question.
Pardon me?
So, I wouldn't have asked the question if I wasn't for it.
Doesn't cost anything to ask the questions. Any other discussion in, or?
Want to move on to the training handout?
Yeah.
That's what you want to...
Right, sure. The training handout is this black and white one stapled, just sort of by itself. This is what was put together by all of the different departments and so, obviously a lot of thanks and appreciation to the departments for putting all of this together. Lists for each department, significant amount of detail regarding the training and it's got some notes about them. And a lot of the training items you'll also see in the budget, but this gives a little bit more description about them and sort of what certifications they entail. So, the first one is clerks and you'll see at the very top it lists the mandatory annual training and it's some of the basic things that we do here at the village hall, the basics for clerks. And then you'll see, you'll see those same items at the top, again, in administration as well as finance. Those are kind of our, our only mandatory trainings. Then you'll see a lot of other training and certifications under clerks for things that are able to provide a lot of the information that are needed to continue to operate the department in accordance with, you know, the rules and regulations and the standards that we have, but they're not necessarily legally required. The next sheet shows economic development and you'll see there, there's a lot of the items for the different individuals to maintain their certifications. We've got the individual costs noted there and who is receiving those, who's doing those sorts of trainings. Administration and finance again are very similar to clerks where we have the very basics that we do in-house that are legally required. And then there's the additional training that is not necessarily legally required, but very useful and very helpful for continuing education credit for, towards some certifications and also just for information on making sure the latest rules and regulations are upheld and that we're not inadvertently breaking the law or anything, which is a good thing. It's good to not break the law. The next one is, sorry, that originally came out wrong, I think. The police department is next and they've also listed here the mandatory amounts. So, they, at the top they've listed the ones they do in-house and then the next section are the mandatory certifications that they have. And they've got quite a few that are mandatory if we're going to participate in that specific program. So, you know, for example, if we're going to do the breathalyzer, we have to have the training and that's provided through NEMER. So, that's in the budget, just under the NEMER categories, you'll see a lot of these are. Then on the next page there, you'll see some optional training, which again is, are items that are not legally required, but are useful and, you know, are able to give the officers the skills that they need, the skills that are very useful to help them. And then at the bottom we've got the conferences, which are useful again for providing that professional development, that information and then also to, you know, maintain continuing education. The next page there is fire and they've also broken it out by the different trainings that they do in-house and then the trainings which we have to pay for. And they've listed, you know, the different amounts by the different teams, which the chief has hit on. And then the last section there is public works and here they list the different operators and you can see the Class A operator needs 30 continuing education units over the course of three years. And so, they list the different certifications there and how many continuing education units are required over a certain period. And then those can, the costs for these programs obviously are going to vary because it depends on what training is done to get those continuing education units. That kind of goes down there. I don't know if there's any specific questions for any specific departments right now.
If you need time to digest this, you know, our intent is to present the budget on the 20th and adopt it. If there's any changes, we can either make them, you can make the budget adoption subject to those changes or if they're not that significant, we can address them in the appropriation ordinance. And if you feel a need to and they're somewhat significant, we can always amend the budget later. We realize that this information, you're just seeing it for the first time tonight and also a couple of the trustees, and I know one in particular was particularly interested in this information, won't be here until the 20th. So, we'd be happy to try to answer any questions if you have at this time.
Just, it's not a big deal, Tim. Who's our elderly officer? Elderly service officer?
Certified is Sergeant Gruen, but since he's moving to the administrative officer, Detective Rinaldi's taking his place. I'm going to be trying to use the skills on both.
Thank you.
Do you have a look at this? Do you want to take a look at this?
Can we pick on public works? There's a figure of $4,000 for miscellaneous electric, small engine, welding, plumbing, heavy equipment. Is that to send staff to learn those skills?
Or maintain them?
For the black sheets.
The black sheet.
This, yeah, the training stuff. It looks like you didn't put it in.
It is. It would be specific training for, you know, the different types of equipment we have. So it would be, you know, custom to those things. They didn't have any one particular, you know, in mind. Those you'll see on there that they're not covered in the budget. So they don't apply to any certifications or anything. These are just things they would rather get more experienced at so they can do more in-house than send it out.
So they can do more in-house?
Correct.
And sending out?
Than rather than send it out to have someone else repair it.
Okay.
One other thing, as you're looking through it, I probably should have mentioned this previously, but just so that you guys are aware as you're taking a look and, you know, evaluating it there, that column over there, it's like it's about the fifth one over there, is the one that says, you know, it'll often say either yes or no or partially. That is the question about whether or not that it's currently reflected in the current draft budget. So the ones that say no are opportunities that if there were to be additional funding available for training, those are things that might be considered. The items that say yes are items that are currently in the budget. And so if you wanted to adjust those, that would be reducing the budget if you were to take those out.
Great, Mike. I was just going to come up to tell you about the fire department one. When I put this together and I went into that column, I tried to put yes or no, you know, in, and it wouldn't take it. And you see yes, no, it means that there is some of that money in our current budget and no, there's not enough that we really need. And then when I went back in to add a few others, some EMS ones, as you see towards the end there, I meant to come up yes, no again, and it just came up yes. So they're all really yes, nos. And we have a little bit of money in all those in the current budget that we're proposing, but not enough to do what we normally do, you know, in the past years. I just want to make sure you knew that.
Okay, thank you.
Did you have one other comment that's a little different for the public works? In the notes section, I actually put the departments that it had applied to because the question was all of public works training, and some of the training overlaps between water and the other divisions, you know, that we do. A lot of it, we do the training together as a department, and other ones are just needed for certain certifications. So I just tried to show you which applied to the water because it is actually a different fund that we're talking about, but they're all on the same list.
Steve, when we combined a number of years ago, public works with the water department, our intent was to be more efficient in terms of labor and also equipment that's used to do both of those jobs. In your estimation, do you have any idea what kind of a savings that might have amounted to over the past?
I really have no idea how to assign a number to... I'll just call it two to $3 billion, so it sounds like the fire department. It's more of a, it's not so much...
Good answer.
I'm sure there's dollar savings, but it's more of an efficiency...
Good answer.
Efficiency-type cross-training and combining, and not just the resources with the equipment, but, you know, the coordination of doing things so that we're not, you know, paving streets that water intends to dig up the next year and things like that. And then a real good example was this morning. Firstly, you know, because the budget's not passed yet, we don't have any seasonal personnel. Today, we started our third round of brush pickup, the third brush pickup for the spring. And that is something we rely heavily on seasonal employees to do, and we don't. So Street Division was calling over to water. Conveniently is occupied when it's brush pickup day, but Facilities was able to help out today. So they supplied one person, you know, to do chipping. And so there's, you know, that wouldn't have happened, you know, before this consolidation. So, you know, every day, the supervisors are, you know, coordinating work with each other.
Okay. Thank you. More questions in this section?
Just a comment. I noticed, in looking through this public works, it seems that there's an awful lot of training that's available that is not in the budget, that you didn't budget for obvious reasons. You know, if you had, you know, a top three that you wished you could put in, I mean, is there anything that, you know, you'd just be doing the happy dance if you were able to provide to your staff?
Well, one thing stands out. First of all, the ones that apply to certifications and, you know, licenses, licensures, as Spencer mentioned, you know, we've got a certain period of time to make those. So it's not important that you have exactly a third, you know, available in any one year. And then there's a lot of opportunities to find, you know, $20 training opportunities too. So we, those types of things are handled. Anything that says no in here, anything that applies to certification actually is already in the budget.
Okay.
So all the no's are things we would like to get back into. The NIPST, you know, drivers' training, this is something we used to send our staff to up in Glenview and actually do, you know, large truck, you know, type driver training. And that hasn't gone on for a long time. So the older veterans have all been through that class, but the younger hires have not been able to experience it. And the other one is the Illinois Public Service Institute, that IPSI. It's a fantastic program, but it requires that you intend three years in a row. And it has to be in a row because their program changes every three years. You can start at any point, but you have to go three consecutive years. And Norial actually had one year, and then the budget problem, two years ago, dropped out of it. Bob Zeiger, when he was in public works, also got one year into the program and wasn't, you know, allowed to continue. So it's something he wants to return back into. And the second listing in there you see is for water, and that would be for the other supervisor. So I would say those, those two categories.
I mean, the driver training, I would think that there'd be some value to that.
Yeah, when I put this task out to the supervisors, like, you know, here's the assignment and get me the list, that was at the top of all their lists. So either they were, you know, communicating and they came up with the same, you know, information, or they all thought of that as their number one, you know, issue because it was the top of all the lists.
If we had a situation with an employee, and I know we have in years past, where supervisor felt there was some need for some corrective driver training, how do we, how do we handle that at this point, absent this type of training? Would it be done in-house?
It would. I mean, that hasn't, you know, occurred in the recent past, but the, it's done in-house. Also, our safety coordinator, and then through Irma, sometimes there's opportunities for refresher-type opportunities through them as well. Or programs that we can get and actually do it in-house, and then we do it as a safety meeting for all staff, even though it's inspired by one or two individuals. That's when you see things like confined space and trenching and shoring. Those are, I'm not trying to say those aren't valuable, but those are trainings that we can do department-wide as well. So we'll find those opportunities to do it. The mechanic, you know, certifications, I mean, they're not certified now in any particular area. We're doing a lot more maintenance in-house. But if we ever got into the, these society certifications that would allow them to do, they're individual sort of, you know, like brakes or, you know, hydraulics or different things like that, and allow us to do more of the maintenance on fire department vehicles. But that, you know, we're growing towards that. I mean, even if it doesn't happen this year, that's something you'll see in the future.
It sounds to me like driver training is kind of on the top of the list. Are you keeping tabs on what we are...
Yep.
One thing, right?
Yes.
Steve, with that IPSI Institute training that Norial did one year, if we were to put that back in and he were to start up again, he'd have to start up at year one again and still, you know, they wouldn't, because it has to be consecutive, you said, right?
It does. And I put this in here as, you know, $1,500, we would actually find out which of the thirds that he's already taken. And it might very well be that even if you, you know, approved this, it would still be off-cycle. So we would have to wait till he was in line for his following year.
Okay.
But this was on his list, so, you know, there's a good chance that this year might be it.
The fire department would like to support our mechanic also in order to get the emergency certificates in order to work on our equipment. Right now, we do outsourcing on a lot of that. And so we can work with the street department and we would make budget and money available to help in that program because it benefits everyone in the village to do that.
It's where, I have it marked A S E. And the reason I started stuttering and I was confusing myself is because I couldn't remember what that stood for, and that's because it's wrong. It should be S A E. It's Society of Automotive Engineers.
Okay.
Like you see on a can of oil.
Anything further in training budget?
Just out of curiosity, I'm just curious, to the two trustees here, what's your thoughts on those items in public works?
I think the, you know, the driver's training is important. It's pretty minimal for the benefit the village would get. I think that'd be a good idea. I also agree that the S A E certifications would be a good addition as well. I think if we could do more of our repairs in-house in our equipment overall, it'd probably save us some money.
We're not talking about a lot of money here.
Yeah, it's...
Thirty-five-hundred bucks.
Five-hundred driver's training.
Mechanic, the E V T, emergency vehicle technician certification that's listed on there, you know, the first one, he's actually already enrolled himself in that class and he's paying for it.
Out of pocket?
Himself, right. So this, I just wanted to point that out because if you had proved that one, it would be a reimbursement for wishing he's already paid.
So if we did the IPSI...
Which one is that again, Steve?
E V T.
Okay.
The mechanic E V T certification, and then that's a four-year certification, and he needs continuing education.
Is that the one the chief was referring to?
Yes. So if we did the IPSI, the NIPST, the E V T, and the S A E, which seem to rank pretty high, it's not a lot of money, and I think we should try to find a way to put it back in.
I agree.
And I don't want to say half, but a good portion of that is the water fund anyway.
Oh, good. What do you think, Bob?
The S A E helps the fire department. I'm for it. I think it's a good idea.
It'll save money in the long run.
Yep.
It will pay back.
So just to verify, then, we're talking about the Illinois Public Service Institute for both of those items, the NIPST drivers' training for those three items, the E V T, C E U for the 250, and then the fleet certifications, the S A E fleet certifications for 1,200.
The not E V T, C E U, the one right above it, is the mechanic E V T certification.
Okay.
Oh, so the mechanic?
Not the C E U.
He's in the class right now.
Okay.
Mechanic E V T.
Right.
Moving right along. Discussion on local gas tax.
Okay, I believe where we had left it last time is we had talked about some different options for the local gas tax. I know there had been some discussion about possibly reducing it, or moving a portion of it to capital projects right now. All of it is currently remaining in the general fund. The two-and-a-half cent on the gas tax, which is $450,000, is all still currently in the general fund. And I guess it's sort of up for the board to decide if we'd like to leave it there, if we'd like to move a portion to capital projects, like to reduce it, like to increase it. Sort of up in the air as to what you would like to do.
I think it's a good idea to move it, some of it, to capitals projects.
That way, it's kind of a rainy day scenario, because, I mean, if it's not used in capital projects, we can then pull it back over into general fund, correct?
Yeah, we certainly could transfer it back over.
By putting it into the capital projects fund, that it would be specified that it would have to be used for that unless we decided we need to pull it back, right?
Right.
Yeah, it's just a paper exercise. I have no problem with where it appears.
I have no problem with it either.
It's fine.
So we want to put part of it there or all of it there?
I don't think it matters, whatever, because we, you know.
Okay.
We can use it in either area, just move it.
So if you do put all of it there, then you're reducing your projected net by 450,000. So, I mean, less now that we've made these different adjustments. But you'll be showing a net negative in the general fund if we do move the entire amount.
So it...
So it...
It doesn't appear, it doesn't, it doesn't appear as, go ahead, I mean...
Right. I mean, it looks like we are spending more...
It looks like we're not, it looks like our spending is out of whack if we do that.
We're spending more than we're bringing in, in the general fund.
And, you know, that's something we need to consider because obviously, the public doesn't always understand those types of moves and why we do it.
Right. And so, I mean, you'd get to the end of the year, and, I mean, it's likely that you would not have the money in the general fund. I mean, we're assuming you wouldn't have the money in the general fund. You'd have to then borrow from capital projects or ask for the transfer back if you're going to move the whole amount. If you're going to just, you know, do a smaller amount, 100,000 or something, then...
Transfer it back if you want.
Our net would just be lower. But right.
To me, it's six of one, half dozen of the other. I mean, at the end of the...
Well, it works out one way or the other anyhow, so.
Right, exactly. It's just a paper, you know, to me, it's just a paper exchange. It's fine.
So the preference would be to go ahead and put it in the capital funds, and then we'll look at our revenues over the year if we have to transfer it back at the end of the year. We've done that sort of thing in years past. We could do that.
That's fine. That works.
That's me.
That works.
Okay. And then the next item, I think we were talking about is the do-to-do-from, which is kind of related. And I think if you have the original red sheet that we had passed out, it's got both the items about the gas tax and this do-to-do-from. If not, we've printed out a copy, which is not quite as good as the original print. So either way, you have the original one that was handed out, this red sheet, or the one we just passed out this evening. You can see over on the right-hand side, talks about a couple of different scenarios for paying back the water fund. And we can choose either to pay them off over the five years, which would be putting about 200,000 a year in there, or we could pay it off over 10 years by putting about 100,000 in there. And so the discussion that had been brought up last time, I believe, was putting a portion of the 450,000, we're reducing the vehicle replacement program, putting a portion of that into offset this water loan. So, I mean, that, I think, would be... So, I mean, that, I think, would be, if we do want to begin paying this down, that'd be a recommendation for the first year, but then we'd have to look for another source to pay it down in the ongoing years. We've got 450,000 from the vehicle replacement program. We can put a portion of it into the water, we can put a portion of it into reserves. It's up for...
And what's reflected on the current sheets?
What's reflected in the current sheet right now is 200,000 into the payment back for the water and 250,000 into emergency reserve fund.
Or the other option would be 100,000 into the water and 350,000 into the general fund.
Yep. Yeah, into the emergency reserve, sure. Yeah, or into the general fund, or whatever the board would like to do with that money.
And that's obviously something that can be changed from year to year.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, there's nothing that would necessarily be set in stone with this, and we could do 200,000 this year, and then the next year we could do 100,000 to pay off the water loan. Yeah, there's nothing legally required.
Or you could do it the other way around.
Yeah, you could do 200 this year, you could do 100 next year, you could do 100 this year, 200 next year. Yep.
I think, you know, in view of what we've put back into the budget, I'd rather see us do 100 to the water fund and look at it again next, next year. Look at it each...
So then the 300 to the emergency reserve.
Or warranty emergency.
Mm-hmm. We can always change it next year if need be.
Okay, it's a good idea.
Anything else on that subject? Last time, continue budget discussion.
This is just if there's any other issues we want to talk about related to the budget, like that captured, but we had from our notes in terms of follow-up, maybe there's something we missed that board members want to bring up at this time.
I was just going to ask you about your projections for next year.
Yes. I'm sorry, and I even passed this out.
Yeah.
Yeah, I sent this to you late this afternoon, but there was a question that came up, was the estimate on the, and Steve, maybe you want to come up here and kind of help me, because these are my numbers and you had your own way of calculating this, but...
Do you want a copy of it?
What I thought I heard trustee Emery explaining, last time we had this discussion, was she was looking at the percentage increase in terms of the per gallon cost and how would that relate to an increase in the total. So what I tried to put together here was a chart, and actually, you have to pay attention to the higher number of the percentage. That's a 73.61 percent. So if we're starting with a base rate of $2.88 per gallon and we anticipate it's going to go up to around five, that's about a 74 percent increase. So if you apply that against, you know, what our costs were, you come up with actually a higher number than what we put in the budget. It's like $167,000. So I think the number that we actually put in the budget is pretty conservative from that standpoint. At least, that's how I understood the conversation the last time. Steve, I don't know if you want to comment on your own methodology?
Oh, sure. Part of the difficulty or why the percentage looks so high is that, well, first of all, we chose to separate out our typical fuel usage, and then we had that market increase in there just to demonstrate that, how we changed the number because of what we're, you know, concerned about, the market happening after we pass the budget, what's going to happen the rest of the year. So that, when you take into account that we purchase 100,000 gallons of fuel total, actually, this, we only bought 90,000, so, but a very typical trend is about 100,000. So there was a good conservation year, but if you use 100,000, the 125 market increase is only a $1.25 adjustment over, you know, 100,000 gallons. So the market increase is a good number. We started with 150,000 as part of the budget process. We knocked it back to 125. So, you know, why does it look like 74 percent when you compare the two numbers? And that's because the base number, the 225, most locations in the budget where there's a revenue component, you'll have a revenue called out in a different section. And in this particular case, the 225 actually represents the costs that the village of Westmont spends on fuel, not how much fuel we buy, because we also service the Park District. So we get about $20,000 from the Park District, and Melissa looked up since the last workshop meeting here, that our actual end-of-year costs, including everybody, and like, how much did we pay Bell Fuels for both gasoline and diesel, and it was $256,000. So we could change, you know, if anything, that tells us that the number, the 225, the original number, is what's not represented. So when you, you can't average the two if they're not representing the same, the same usage. And so with that, you know, the answer would be is, well, maybe that 225 should be 250 or 255. And, but then you would have to add the offset for the Park District income somewhere else. So it really does represent our costs, it's just reflective differently for that item, and that's why the percentages look off, but they're really relatively good numbers as best we can forecast today. I added the two, you know, together, using the 256, and it's actually only a 32 percent increase as opposed to the 74 that... It's still scary to think about whatever number you want to use.
Yeah.
So the number of the budget you would feel fairly confident in, then?
Yes.
Yeah, confidence is not a great... It's a crap shoot. It's the best number to use, yeah.
We don't know what's going to happen.
Confident that our math is accurate, we're not necessarily confident that the projections will be.
Okay. It's a best guess scenario.
The best guess, yeah.
Okay. Works.
Kathy has a question, Ron.
Oh, right.
At the last budget workshop, there was the question on the E A P. Okay, I did the research on that. Okay, the actual cost for that is 3,000, and what that is for is, there are two fees involved in that. There is a monthly fee that is charged for the debit cards, and that is $6.45 per actual employee. And so, and there's 27 participants right now. And then there's an annual fee, that's $500, and then also a $2 fee per eligible participant. So that's where those costs are coming from.
Is that pretty standard with all providers of E A P?
That was, I'm sorry, it wasn't the E A P, it was the...
The flex spending.
The flex spending, right. Is that pretty standard?
I'm actually doing some research with our insurance pool to see if we can get a better price with a different vendor.
Okay.
So we're taking a look at that, and if we can get a better price on a different...
We only have 27 people that take advantage of the debit card?
Of the flexible spending account.
Wow, that kind of surprises me, because that's such a great deal.
It is.
I mean...
But it's better than it was when we first started, because when we first started, we only had like about 12. So it has increased. So, but yeah, I think that some of the employees maybe still just don't quite understand how it works and what a great benefit it is.
Well, and it changed too. Didn't the law change on that? At one time, you could buy over-the-counter, you know, tile and all, things like that, and I don't think that's the case anymore.
Still more restrictive a year ago.
It's far more restrictive than it was.
Right, well, yeah, I mean, you can, you can still buy over-the-counter medications, but now you have to get prescriptions.
From the doctors to write it out.
Right, and that's because of the Healthcare Reform Act.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, government.
Okay, so, but that was the information on that. And we noticed on the reconciliation and also in the budget that it was actually flipped with the pre hire or the post-hire screenings, so we corrected that in the budget.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, many of the items that were identified last time at the, through the reconciliation, a lot of those have been addressed and fixed, and you've got the adjusted reconciliations as well as the adjusted budget pages right there. So the items, such as the ones that Kathy had mentioned, the ones that Steve had mentioned, we've got the phone information adjusted with I T. We've got the salary information with the cost sharing for the Park District adjusted. I mean, the majority of those items that, I think all the items that we had discussed at that meeting and determined, you know, we needed to adjust these have now been adjusted into the budget and are reflected in the blue sheets that you have in front of you, the blue and yellow fund summary sheet. So that is after all the changes that were made as a result of the budget reconciliations.
Right. Thanks, Spencer.
This is by far the most detailed budget that I've ever seen our departments put together.
Did a great job.
Any, any year that I've experienced. And I realize it was a tremendous amount of time and effort on everyone's behalf. And I, and I'm sure the board will agree, appreciate all the time and effort that all of you have put into it. It's not easy, an easy time, and we're not exactly sure what's around the next bend, but we're hoping that things are going to improve. But in terms of cutbacks in all of the departments, I think everyone has done a terrific, terrific job. And it's not, it's not perfect by any means, but it's certainly an indication that we have a staff that's doing everything they can to keep the village going, keep providing our residents the services that they deserve at the, at the least possible cost. And I, I think that's to be passed on to all of you, and you deserve many congratulations. That also extends to our manager and our Mr. Finance off to my right as well.
Mr. Finance, as he's now known.
Unless there's some other...
Just one last comment that we need to discuss. I just wanted to mention that I don't know if we could have put this kind of detail together, you know, 15 or 20 years ago in the timeframe that we did without the computer technology that we have, which, when it works, works well. We had a little bit of scare this morning.
Oh, no, what happened?
And later this afternoon, when we went offline network a couple times when we were trying to prepare some stuff for today, but as long as we have electricity and the computers work, we're good.
That's good.
Any other questions from board members?
Do we want to have the meeting on Wednesday? We have it posted, budget workshop meeting. Do you want to have another opportunity to come back and digest the information that you have this evening before the 20th?
For me, I would say after the things that we've put back in tonight, if you, you know, you or Spence identify any red flags, if anything jumps out that doesn't make sense with some of the changes we've made, then I'd say yes, just alert us and we'd go ahead. But for myself, I don't think there's really a need right now unless, unless we've forgotten something that jumps out to you guys tomorrow.
I agree.
Me too.
Okay.
We've beaten this budget to death.
We have. Yeah, we have.
It's been a good exercise.
It's a good budget, though.
It is a good budget.
I think so.
They started out with a good budget.
Final comments from board members?
Not at this time.
Okay. With that being said, unless there's something else that come before, so I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second scrap.
Roll call on the adjournment.
Trustee Sinica.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Thank you to everyone.